Lee's iconic work. Okay.
All right.
You're on.
So this is the Steve Vader property on 144th Avenue. This is the preliminary plat. It's called the Oaks of St. Croix. Seen this a couple of times at the concept. So basically, we still have the base lots that were shown on the concept. You might recall a couple of months ago that we did a certified survey map and created a lot for the existing buildings for financing purposes. However, we did not have any road dedication and stuff on that certified survey map. Needed to get a little more from this, the lot that we created. So that lot is back in as part of the, of this project. Just be replatted with the rest of the lots. The only real change as far as the layout goes is with lots seven and eight. See that we kind of did a cheek jogged line there to make, get those areas. The reason for that is that we now have a huge stormwater pond rig in this area. And we needed to build, get a building site, build a pad here and here. And so we had to just kind of jog the line down so we could get the required amount of area for those lots. I'll give you a show you the site plan here. Gives you my, maybe a little better idea of what's all happening. So cul-de-sac is going to be added at the end of 140th, 40, excuse me, 144th. There is a joint venture with Steve Vader and the town to improve 144th Avenue to current standards. So that's going to be part of this project. In addition, county is going to require an intersection on Cairo B as part of these improvements. So that's also included. Here's the storm pond that I talked about, got building pads for these lots that will be constructed. Essentially, the drainage is coming from this side. This is kind of a wooded area, higher ground. It comes underneath the road. Drain swill here, right by your soil over to the storm pond. And that takes care of that stuff. Driveways will be constructed for each lot, culverts. This might add that there's only one lot on the north side of the road that's an existing lot here. And then, and so we got his driveway as part of this project reconstructing that. These two lots here go up to 145th. And I will require to get a little bit of an easement from these folks. He's with a fraud lot, it's just too big a lot there. A couple by the name of Rosen has just purchased those in the last month or so. So I am in contact with them and will work out. We just need a temporary easement for the grade to get that intersection to work there.
So you met all the things that county was talking about as far as low building opening, et cetera, on their letter?
I think, how do I explain it? So there was, so I haven't done anything as far as with that yet with Kelly, with the county. What's confusing her is the drainage survives. And I think when we do that, it'll become more clear.
Okay.
Because depending on, yes, there are some perch water tables out here. But if you're building on the other side of the hill from them, they don't come into play.
Yeah.
So it's just some of those things that need to be straightened out with, with the county. The STANTEC memo, we have not resolved all those issues either.
Okay.
Although, as I said, a plan commission, by looking at them, they can all be resolved. They're just a matter of, some of them are a little bit philosophical in how you should handle something. And some of them are just showing details better.
Okay. Lee, you're online. Did you want to say something?
Yes, I'm Adam, Chair Members of the Board. I would agree with the plant commission as far as they're being willing to go ahead and approve this. The engineering comments are like Doug said, they can be addressed. We'll continue to work with the developer on that. You know, the one thing that, you know, we always like to make sure the board is aware of is that, you know, you need to ultimately approve the fact that the road is longer than a thousand foot maximum for a cul-de-sac. So just to point that out, we've had that in other developments as well, but just, just that's a note. So other than that, you know, we're just waiting to see the response from the developer's engineer in regards to our comments. And we anticipate that those, well, we know that those will get addressed before it can move forward. So.
Is there anyone here tonight who received a letter regarding this preliminary plat and wishes to speak to it? Raise your hand if you received a letter. Okay? Anything else you want to add before I turn it over to the board?
No, I don't think so.
So you have the stormwater agreement in our drive, but not the developers' agreement yet?
Yeah, I haven't seen a developer's agreement. I don't know if we're at that point where one can be put together, but I haven't seen a draft one yet.
And Teresa, I can respond to that. We have a draft that's completed and ready to go. I was waiting for preliminary plat approval. And I can send, assuming that the preliminary plat is approved, I can send it to Doug tomorrow.
So in that developers' agreement, we're going to have in there our agreement about this road and how these costs are going to be allocated?
Correct.
I will, I will say that we did get a bid today for the road. One of them. So, and it's about a hundred thousand, close to, probably lower than Lee's estimate originally. So we're hopeful. We're going to wait for one more bid.
We always like Lee to, you know, put it up a little bit so we're not crying in our coffee.
Lee does not like to be the low bidder.
Okay, anyone here from the board like to ask a question? Dan, go ahead.
The only question, refer to that as temporary easement up there on the end of the road?
This year, yeah, so. Cause all we need to do is be able to grade to the toe of the slopes properly so you can get this slope. And, and after we're done grading, it can go. The road bed itself and, and everything will be within the road right of ways.
It's just a temporary construction easement.
Temporary construction easement.
Anyone else? God, here Steve, so here we go. I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Oaks. I'll make a motion. Why is it, why does it look green on here? That's what I want to know. Make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for the Oaks of St. Croix for Steve Vader at 360 144th Avenue. PID 030104080200. That we condition this upon two things, that we approve the fact that this roadway 144th will be longer than 1,000 feet. And that a developer's agreement is signed between all the parties after approval by our engineer and our attorney.
Second.
You okay with that? Okay. I, anyone else have anything? Anything, I should have added one more thing, that you'll come into compliance with anything that the engineer feels is important on this from their comments. You want to say?
Second.
All right. Anything else from anyone? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, it passes. Congratulations. Off to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our, our fire chief is online. I just want him to know that I'm going to, we've moved to you up to six right on the town building update, Zach. We're just going to take this short-term rental and then we'll be on to you.
No problem.
Okay. Approval of short-term rental, we have Kevin Atkins' short-term rental at 161 Riverview Acres. Anyone here, I know you want, you spoke to it. Do you want to say anything else? If you do, you should. Okay, anyone else want to speak to it? So the town has an ordinance in place that requires short-term rentals to be licensed. There is a limitation to some of the things that we can do, but do you have it handy?
Yes.
It's the pink one. But the county does have some requirements for short-term rentals under their, under the state's boarding house saying so they're required to have they're septic and well inspected. And so he has all of that information here along with his insurance. His contract with them as far as Airbnb is concerned, his mapping, the public health has given him is licensed. And then we require all of them to come in yearly at this time of year. He's after the fact. Normally, we approve these in June, but his is a new one. So I don't know if anyone has any questions regarding that that's in the audience, but that's what it involves. So he will be required to have this, he's with VRBO, I said Airbnb, I'm sorry, it's VRBO. Anyone have any comments? Go ahead.
Do I need to identify again?
No, we got you.
Just as a simple note, an observation from us being neighbors, the property has already been rented as a short-term rental on a couple of occasions. I'm not sure what the implications of that are, but hopefully the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. The one concern I think would be that our road, which access, provides access to that property is our private road in our association. Our association has not been notified about this request. Kevin is the acting president of the association and has had a history of verbalizing against other members using their homes as Airbnb or short-term rentals. So this does represent a 180-degree turn on his position without providing any discussion to the association. So it does bring some concerns.
I presume our attorney can weigh in as far as what we would have to do, whether we have any power into that matter that he's speaking to.
Yeah, we, we really don't. I mean, the fact that it's been used without a permit previously that could have led to a zoning enforcement matter. He's here now with an application. As you indicated, there are county requirements, there are town requirements. He's making application, presumably if the town were to decide that it wasn't going to approve this as a short-term rental, then he'd have to stop. And if he didn't, then we'd take action for violating the ordinance moving forward. But he's, he's here now with an application, so we're to deal with it as it's before us.
Nick, I have a question for you then. Is there anything that the, the association could do amongst themselves to stop these types of rentals within their association that? Or, or can they legally do something within their association?
Yeah, if, if there are, I don't know a lot about this association, but if there are rules or covenants or, or whatnot, you know, certainly we represent groups that have restrictions that don't allow folks to rent on a short-term basis. That would be, that would be their purview to, to look at that. But from our perspective, if they meet all of our requirements, you know, as long as there's access and they, they meet all the requirements of, of our ordinance, we really can't, we don't have any basis to, to stop it. But it's a good point, if the association has restrictions, wants to look at those restrictions, that's certainly their, their option.
I find this conversation interesting because when the association was in front of us before, we couldn't have a conversation about nothing with the association.
Right. So a couple of things, I, we have chapter 167 in our code of ordinances, which regulates these short-term rentals. And just so everyone is aware, I'm just going to go over a few things really quickly. We don't allow recreational vehicles, campers, tents, or any of those temporary lodging arrangements on-site. No outdoor events can last more than one day and are limited to no more than twice the capacity of the sleeping quarters. So if he's online as allowing eight people to sleep there, the most people that can be present is 16. He has to have a local property management contact, whether it is the owner or him or someone else. He has to hold a state of Wisconsin tourist roaming house, roaming, rooming house license, not roaming. He has to have a minimum of one off-street parking stall for every guest bedroom. So if there's four bedrooms, he has to have four stalls. And it cannot be in the road right away. That's for a town road right away. It's different for yours. It all has to have refuse containers, trash service, adequate sanitation. It has to have clearly delineated property lines. An evacuation plan and smoke and carbon monoxide, fire extinguishers, et cetera. So there are some rules in place that are different than on the short-term rental sites that you see. We did this because of some of the issues we were having in the town with short-term rentals. As I stated to the gentleman in the back, we had one that applied last year that we caught that had no septic and no drinking water. I don't know that I would want to pay for a short-term rental and show up there with that idea in hand. We have a satellite outside and a bottle of water, doesn't work for me. Other, other entities around us do these limitations because in the past, we've had party houses, especially on the river, that had 50, 60, 80 people at them for a weekend, for a bachelor party and drove the neighbors nuts. So we put some of these rules in place so that we could kind of control these so they don't impact the residential flavor of the neighborhood as much. So if you get a chance, feel free to read that ordinance in its entirety. It's not very long. Okay? Anyone else wish to speak? All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the short-term rental for Kevin Atkins at 161 Riverview Acres.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed and it passes. So we moved up number 12, the fire department, the plan for build out of storage in the fire hall. Remember, we talked about this when we were talking about the new fire, the new building. And I know that at the time, Bruce had taken some measurements, but there are no plans. So I know that, I had talked to our fire chief and he didn't want to speak to the board tonight on that. So you are up. Is he still on?
Yes, I am.
Yep, we got you.
So I, I guess we just talked about it earlier this week in passing and we were kind of waiting on plans to go forward with this. So, you know, we never got, we never got like a full plan to build out that storage area. So in addition, I guess we're going to go forward on our own to try to come up with a plan and a cost and all that. And the question is at this point, I guess for us is since this was something that we talked about starting last year. Once we come forward with this, we're hoping to do this as kind of one of our first addition or remodel for the, you know, for the changeover of the buildings itself. There's not really a whole lot I can say to it right now, just because we don't have a plan, just because we were waiting for one. But is that kind of what the board is thinking as far as, you know, moving forward with, with what we're doing on our side for remodel? Is, is, you know, working on this, working on the plumbing, the, the two things that we started last year?
So Zach, Chris here, I believe you and me should sit down and talk a little bit further about all aspects of this. I have a great person in mind that would represent the town and the fire department when you have an opportunity to meet with me.
Yeah, absolutely. I would, yeah, I would definitely do that.
And Bruce, why don't you tell us what you can, what you have and what you could provide? So we just have that out on the table.
Okay.
You can turn it on.
So when we, when we met, I don't know.
Months ago.
A long time ago. And took a look at renovating the current storage to be more usable. And to get some of the stuff that's out in the apparatus bay back in a storage space more protected. I guess I, I'll apologize for not moving forward with putting plans and sections together. I dropped the ball on that. So I can certainly put together plans and sections and have a conversation with our structural engineer to make sure that the mezzanine storage is designed to accommodate what you want to put on there. And that isn't going to take a lot of time to get that done. So.
Yeah, I guess, I guess the only thing that I would, I would have a question on is, you know, how we were watching that back wall? And we were watching the little cracks that were forming from, from, you know, the building being, building aging. I guess hanging something off that back wall potentially and building a front wall where it's going to have some load bearing on that back wall? I guess that's a question to kind of have a conversation about as well.
Sure. And, and we've been checking those crack monitors. They haven't moved at all. So the work, the work that was done on the, the north wall with excavating, putting in the drain tile and re-waterproofing has stopped the wall movement. So at, at this point, we're not concerned.
Okay.
With that, all being able to accommodate doing this storage and mezzanine addition.
Okay. Thank you.
What would it cost to do some very preliminary, basic drawings to help anyone that we have to build it? What would it take to do that?
Yeah, probably, you know, 2,500 bucks at the most.
So I'm just putting that out there because we all need to know that number to make a good decision. You know, my concern, no matter how we do this, is that we build it well enough that it doesn't cause an issue. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Strong enough.
Yep.
Understood.
So what would you continue to say, Chris?
What's that?
What else would you like to say about that, Chris?
I believe that me and Zach should meet first and if it's over my pay grade, I'll get Bruce involved.
Okay, so let's do that. We'll still have to bring it back to this board, obviously, if we're going to spend the money. But Bruce does have some preliminary measurements that you could provide to Chris and we can start there. Would that work for you, Zach?
Yep, absolutely.
And I'll have it on the next agenda. So we don't get going later. All right. Thank you, Bruce. I appreciate it. Okay, next on our agenda, now that we got that, and thank you, Zach, for being online.
No problem.
Town hall building update. First thing is the pay request number one for the building, if you'd like to speak to that.
Sure, I received the pay application number one from Burghammer Builders, reviewed it. The majority of the first pay application is for mobilization with a little bit included, giving their excavators on. So it also covers a lot of the insurance and bonding for the total budget. Which is pretty standard for the first pack pay application when there hasn't been a lot of construction work done yet. The, the majority of it is, is covering mobilization and insurance and bonds.
Anyone have any questions regarding that?
I, I have a question. What, what is summary order two under change order? Is this, is this something we had already had accounted for?
Change order number two, yeah, that was the 58.5 that we, I don't think you were at that meeting.
It's very possible. What did we?
That was after the bid and it has to do with, well.
The well can pump controls.
So this is an estimate?
Okay.
That was the, the town had agreed to pay for up to 45% of the well controls because they weren't included in the, their bid. For a not to exceed number of $58,500.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve pay request number one to Burghammer Builders Incorporated for the amount of $32,517.55.
Second.
Any other discussion on that? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, it passes. We have later on the agenda to transfer ARPA funds to pay for that, but I'm just letting you all know that upfront here. Next thing is the change order for the shelving and the countertops. Do you want to speak to that?
Sure, we sent out a proposal request to Burghammer Builders to give us a price for doing the base cabinets and counter adjacent to the front counter of the office. So that, that would all be done by one person. And then also included doing the countertop in the kitchen. Cause that wasn't included with the person that's doing all the cabinets.
Cause it was, part of the reason is because of the plumbing issue with the kitchen, they wanted to do the cap, they wanted to do the countertop with, with a contractor rather than with our sub. And the cabinetry that's going in the office in the corner where the window is for them to help customers at, has to meet the exact measurement for that, what those two windows with the countertop over the top. So that's what that change order is about. I gotta look it up. Anyone have any questions regarding that? We originally got the price.
Fine with that.
We originally got the price from our subcontractors, so the price is very, very similar. Hardly any difference.
So what, what category did that originally fall under? Was it part of the main bid?
No, it was under Design Works. So the original number that Design Works gave us is now significantly less because of this.
Right. So originally it was working, Teresa was working and the town board was working with design builder to do all of the cabinets. And then through discussions with them, it was decided to move this, the cabinet that's adjacent to the front counter to Burghammer.
Yeah, but that, the money's associated with design build. Where are they in here?
It was originally, if you go back two months, it was in the left-hand column for Design Works. So Design Works was about, I don't know, 10,000 more than it is now. So now Burghammer wants 7,054 to do it. It's a pretty much, you know.
Oh, but those, that money must have been accounted for somewhere in the original bidding process. I mean, where, that it was going to be spent somewhere.
We didn't bid that out for Design Works because it was less than 25,000.
So did we always know it was going to be a change order?
We've known from about the time that the bid went out. Yes.
Oh, now I know.
But I, I think maybe some of the conversation was prior to your chair.
Yeah.
That's fine. Are there any other items that are like that, that are outside of the bid?
Not right now, not that I know of.
Okay. All right.
So I'll make a motion to approve the change order for Burghammer Builders for $7,054 for the shelving and countertops. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
But that should be now be added into the spreadsheet.
We're going to put it back in the spreadsheet. She will do that. Oh, yeah. It'll go into the change order. Absolutely. We're not missing up on that. Okay, first thing up is to award or deny the bid on the septic. You have the bids on your table. We just did the, we didn't give you the whole bid package, but you do have the septic bid opening. I know Chris was here, so Chris reviewed them. I've reviewed them. They used the the letter or the bid document from STANTEC that they provided to us. Chris, do you have any comments on these?
Oh, looking forward to it. Oh, looking forward to it.
Anyone wanna make this motion for the bidder?
I make a motion to approve the bid for the town of Saint Joseph to Zapper Brothers Inc. of Hudson in the amount of forty thousand nine hundred eighty-four dollars.
Can you say for the septic?
For the septic.
Yeah.
Second.
All right, because you, you said for the bid, but you didn't say the septic, so I wanted to make sure we got that. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, that passed.
Then a follow-up question? I noticed on the spreadsheet now.
Yes.
It actually has this exact amount on there already.
Yes.
But what was the original estimate though, when we were doing?
Sixty thousand.
Sixty thousand?
Yeah.
Okay. Should that, should the sixty thousand number be in that first column now?
Well, I suppose we could put it in, but we.
But, I mean, so we're, see how we're doing against our original.
Our original numbers. We can go back and do that. That's not a problem. Okay, if you'd like that, I can sure do that.
If you're putting actual numbers.
Everything is relative. Okay, so that's passed. Our next one up is the flooring bid. We received four um bidders on this project. Um, I reviewed these today because these just came in yesterday. Yesterday was the bid opening. I'm just gonna state that if you look over these carefully, the bid document that went out from the town of Saint Joseph is this one, which is a three-page document. Um, on the third page, it does app, or fourth page, I should say, does ask for a variety of information, including um references and contact information. Um, some people included this document, some did not, which is fine. Um, my only issue here, and I'm gonna let Bruce speak to this, is that we did not receive references on one of these bidders. So would you like to speak to that?
Sure. When the information is requested on the bid form uh to be submitted with the bid, and it's not, the bid is considered non-responsive. So.
So how does the board want to do this?
Can we know which bidder was the non-responsive one?
It's the low bidder.
The low bidder.
By the three, two hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Yeah, unfortunately. I mean, I feel bad about it, but.
So I have a question.
You have that question. Have that with Nick.
When, when the omission or item that was placed is not material to the bottom line, isn't it reasonable to offer to the low bidder a conditional award based upon them providing that item that was omitted? And having it approved, you know, and fall in line with the bid specs. I'm, I'm asking that of Bruce and the attorney at the same time.
Well, was it a miss, was the omission a mistake? I mean, that's, that's the question. There, there are requirements for mistakes under state law. I don't know if this one was a mistake or what the rationale was for the omission.
Yep. So again, the, with the references not being included, like I said, it's considered non-responsive. It's certainly the town's discretion to contact them and ask for references.
How does that, for you two, how does that put us in place against the other bidders? Do you see what I'm saying? I don't know if that's the right terminology to say, but if you're gonna give um that leeway to this bidder, how do you justify that to the other low, the next low bidder?
Agreed.
Or the other bidders.
And that's, you know, that's part of the quandary of, you know, how, how much leeway do you allow with the bid? When it, when it says on the bid, you're supposed to submit three references with your bid, and they don't.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm leaning more towards, everything's documented, right? I, as much as that two hundred bucks would be nice, you, you didn't follow the process. And you can say it's not material, but then we should have called out that you don't need the references. Because then we unfairly burdened three other bidders in that same position. So we had three people who followed the rules and a fourth person who didn't successfully follow what we asked.
Correct.
So then we should just omit the individual who didn't follow. I know that sounds mean, but this is a bid. This is, we're just running this as though we asked for these things. You didn't fulfill the need. Sorry.
Right.
Um, Nick, did you wanna weigh in?
Well, I mean, you're requiring a complete list of references, and a complete list of references was not provided. That permits you to reject that bid. It does not require you necessarily to reject the bid. That being said, the purpose of public bidding is to establish a fair and consistent process by which all kind, all bidders are required to follow. So if there were a major deviation where it would be to the town's disadvantage to throw out a bid on a particular item like this, you might look at it and say, we should ask for the reference. Um, here, it's probably not material, but you know, at the same time, you look at it and say you want to establish a fair and consistent process. Um, and from my perspective, unless there's compelling reason to do it, I wouldn't allow for the deviation.
Anyone from the board have any other questions on this?
One minute.
Okay.
And I follow everything you said there, Nick. Um, but how nitpicky are you gonna be? I mean.
It's, it's a difference of three hundred and thirteen dollars and nineteen cents.
For all practical purposes, the bids are almost equal. Okay, all right.
I, I understand that, but we don't, we don't just give the rules out. It's these, we set forth the standard, just follow the standard.
And what Nick said is that.
You don't have to disqualify it. If you wanna make a motion for the bid that wasn't completed and answered, that's fine.
But my, I guess my earlier question, I think, could we make it conditional upon the provision of those um references and the approval of, of those references?
You could. Yeah, you're, you're not required to automatically throw it out, and, and the standard is substantial compliance with your bid requirements. Um, like I say, I mean, if they've made a mistake, typically they'll notify you. We had one early on in this process uh where they notified us of a mistake. Something was clearly omitted. This one, you know, who knows? You can you, you're not required to throw it out. You can make the call, make the request if they.
But you can't award it tonight, then.
We could award.
Because you'd have to.
We could award it conditionally.
No, you can't. You, to my understanding, you have to, you either choose to award it or you, because you can't come back to these vendors in forty days or fifty days and say, we want to accept your bid now. We either have to.
Yeah, you're not, you're not gonna be in a position to renegotiate. If, if this particular vendor didn't supply the reference, you may have to rebid this whole thing.
Yeah.
Depending on, on timing.
Yeah, because these bids are only valid for X number of days, and if by the time this person does or doesn't give us something valid, then I don't see the three hundred and thirteen dollars and nineteen cents a valid reason to risk having to rebid this process.
And my, I come back to my risk that I'm talking about is what's stopping the other low bidders next to this person to come back against the town because we've offered out more flexibility to the one that didn't follow the rules. That's what I'm, that's where I'm coming from. I have a hard time with that because that's happened.
Again, if you wanna make the motion for that, the lowest bidder, and say that you agree with it, okay, you know, you're allowed. But to me, the thing is, is that I, I, I would vote no in that instance because they didn't comply. And you can say that it's a valid or invalid reason, but everyone else followed the rules.
And I'm not disagreeing with you whatsoever. I'm just raising the question about um, I'm thinking about me as a vendor coming in here, putting in my clothes, and all of a sudden I realize oh, someone forgot to add the references. You know, a small clerical mistake, and here we did our due diligence to come in, even though it's two hundred, we came to come in as the low bidder here, but we're gonna lose it because someone forgot to do their due diligence and put three references on there. Okay? And I, I'm just I think that sometimes people would look at a town saying, you know, are you gonna be, run it down to the pinpoint rule of everything? If we had to list all of the, you know, the items in here that would priority, where would those references lie? They, they're, they're important, but chances are, unless they're, unless we're their first customer, you know, which we'd find out, you know, if we ask for references.
I think the hard part is, is that the voters would probably notice that we bend with the rules, and I think that's the hard part.
Mm-hmm.
I, I, I understand what you're saying. I do. But the hard part comes back to, we do these things for a reason, and if you deviate from that, for one, then it's going to be, well, you did it here, why don't you do it here as well? And if it's a clerical error, I can understand clerical errors, they happen, but you know, these are a plus forty thousand dollar bid for each of them. And so eh, at that point, if you've got that kind of money on the line, to me, you should be making sure that everything's ready to go.
Okay, so I, I, I'm sorry for interrupting, but if we, if somebody had not noticed that those references had, had been missing, we'd probably be, have no problem awarding this to the lowest bidder tonight. And then all of a sudden, we see that, oh, they're missing. What do we do now? And this actually happened with uh the, the contract. For with Burg, with Burghammer, and we gave Burghammer the choice, I mean, to either lose the bid or, you know, and so the only thing that's different between that situation and this situation is we caught it up, caught it before we're awarding it. Because if that was the case, if you had found that they had left off that uh the pump, was it the pumps? I could know.
Yep, the well controls.
Yeah, that, that, and then if you had found that ahead of time, that wouldn't have been an omission, and we would never have awarded this to Burghammer.
Right.
And we'd be spending another three hundred thousand because that's how much the next bidder was.
Right.
Those are real-life examples of the exact situation, but we're penalizing, we didn't, I shouldn't say we didn't penalize, we could have penalized Burghammer.
We did, because we're not paying a hundred percent of the cost.
But I'm just throwing it out there. We have a real-life example in front of us in both situations.
Like the, the key difference on that one, obviously, was the amount of money. And so the question was, do we reject it out of hand and thereby placing, shifting more responsibility to the taxpayers? Or do we try to work something out with that particular contractor? You know, this one's three hundred dollars. Like I said, statutorily, this bid is not invalid. It is, it is valid. You could call the contractor and you could say, we intend to reject unless uh within five days you supply that reference. You could put those type of conditions on as well. But, you know, certainly there's an argument for strict compliance. There is an example where we've provided some, some latitude, and you have latitude to condition this particular bid as well uh with other conditions uh that shorten that timeline, if you'd like to.
Has anyone on the board dealt with this bidder?
Yes.
Okay. And are they referenceable based on their quality of work? Okay, so then I'm kind of curious. What does everyone else think?
I think Dan should make a run in.
Make an emotion?
A motion.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, hopefully I'll try to phrase this right. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the, the flooring bid by, from carpeting by Mike in the amount of forty-four thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-one cents. I'm gonna make that motion condit- conditional
Five days.
Okay. Conditional upon uh carpeting by Mike providing the requested number of references as specified in our bid and having those references to the town in less than five day, business days after being noticed and having those references uh acknowledged or approved by the town. In other words, calling and make sure they, they get.
By the clerk.
Second.
Any other discussion on this?
I, I have one question.
Go ahead.
They don't supply the references within five days. What's next? Because these, the rest of these bids will be invalid by the next town board meeting.
Unless we have a special board meeting to do it.
That requires special posting, and it's extremely expensive.
So I, I would suggest that you amend your motion or add to your motion to say that if the references aren't submitted, or if they can't be verified within that period of time, the bid will be rejected and the bid will be awarded to the next lowest bidder.
Okay.
So I'll amend my motion to add language specifying that if the references are not provided within a specified time period and that the references are not verified by the town, that the town then award the flooring bid to Burghammer Builders in the amount of forty-four thousand eight hundred and eighty-one dollars.
Second.
Second. Did you wanna say something? I'm sorry. Did you wanna say something or not? Okay.
I'd like clarification of five, of five days. Are we gonna go five weekdays?
In the motion, in the motion, it is five business days.
Our business days or everybody else?
Business day is Mondays through Fridays. I said five business days after being notified.
So, so to be, to make it perfectly clear on which business day, does the clerk's office need to be open or closed, and you need to put a specified date, they will have be here at such and such a date? Because if they show up and we're, you're closed, how are you gonna handle it?
Nobody's gonna show up, presumably. Presumably, the.
This is an email.
The reference is gonna be provided by email, exactly, and then Terry's gonna make a, a call. Well, it has to be based on when, when they're contacted, because if it's you have to make positive contact so that they know.
I'll amend the motion to include that in, in the contacting information for carpets by Mike that they be given, given the end date of when the uh references must be received by the town.
Second.
Are you guys from Carpet by Mike? Why don't you come on up to the microphone? I have, you're a complete packet here, and they're not in here. Did you send, did you send a separate email?
No, I handwrote them on the document with the different builders and different manufacturers that we work with through email. I was, I couldn't pull it up on my phone to prove it, so just because of the signal here.
Did you, when you say the different manufacturers, we asked for a specific Mannington commercial grade.
I apologize. It was a few weeks ago, and I don't know exactly the wording, so.
Yeah, we don't have that.
I can go through and look for it too, or I can provide it by tomorrow before noon.
You have to turn it, you have to turn it up.
I just have one page.
No, I included the packet too, so I'll check back on that too. I apologize to the board.
So I just wanna verify that you're gonna be installing that Mannington that we requested in our document.
Yes, and it should be listed on there as a product.
It just says Highland Maple LVT unbrowed it.
That's what your document, yes, my Mannington Highland Maple.
Okay, just making sure. So no, this is the only thing that came to us.
Okay, I'll have to go back on that too. I apologize.
So I don't know what happened. Did you send it separate from this?
I don't know off the top of my head.
What is your name?
My name's Tiffany Herker. I own Carpeting by Mike.
Okay, I'm glad you showed up, and I'm glad you've explained it to us.
Thank you. Appreciate the time.
This, you know, you can see where things become a problem. I always say to people, it's better to hand deliver it to the door, you know?
I'll be in tomorrow. So if you send an email, I will get it.
Thank you. I'll have it in before noon.
Thanks for coming. Anything else from anyone on the board?
We have to make the vote.
We have to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passes. So you got it, but tomorrow will be a busy day, so hopefully you can figure that out. If you need to, you can call the office and make arrangements to come here in person. Thank you. Thank you for doing that, and thanks for coming here tonight. All right. Okay. Okay, on to the next thing on ours is update on furnishings, I do not have. Anything for you except. Chris and his employees moved some stuff out of um. A building in Hudson and it's sitting up here in the shed. Um, couple pieces are rather heavy, not great. Um. You received the spreadsheet on the building. Anyone have any questions on that? Did I give you a copy of this at your spot? Here, I'll give that to you. Anyone have any questions on that? It's as up to date as it can be, but we will put that column in that Dan is asking for.
Uh I did have one question, did we ever get a response on the generator? Because I think it was instead as an optional.
No.
Okay.
That's you, somebody here was looking.
That's my fault.
That's yours.
I'll own it. I'll make some phone calls.
It's on you.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was busy moving furniture.
Otherwise, the reason I'm asking is um one of the things that they had referenced with Dairyland Power was understanding how we can maybe. Work together with something on that. So the conversation and.
That's next, so go ahead and speak.
Okay, so the conversation has led to. Either itemizing out every rebate, which is tedious. Or if we try, I'm going to try and work with St. Croix County if the board approves it. To try and create more of like a a lumped rebate based on what we've all. Gotten approved in these packets. Is everyone okay with that?
I'm fine if you lump it all together, just.
Yeah, because well, so basically you get a little bit more, it's more like a customization of the rebate instead of like. Oh, you bought a hundred and sixty one LED lights at this wattage bill out here.
Yes, I know.
Um, the other thing is things like the water heater rebate program, we can order that through them. And then you have their controller rebate and their load management and all that.
Sure.
Okay. So then I will call them tomorrow.
I will put those two things back on the agenda for next month. Um, Bruce, is there anything else for you? Because otherwise we'll let you go. Okay.
I do have one question, when do we need to have something like electricity and all that stuff plowed in here?
Yes, I'll tell you about that.
I will check with Ron.
You'll check with?
Ron.
Okay.
Ron Lanners with Burghammer Builders to find out if there's a. A date that they'd like to have. All the power brought in that they can tap into, I'm sure it's at least probably at least a couple months.
Yeah, but I just want to make sure that we get, if it's just like conduit and we can get all that in beforehand at least.
So so we're having this discussion now. And it's perfectly clear, they can. Come in from wherever they want with power, not across the new blacktop.
Right.
So so you want me to cut across the new blacktop? That's what I heard, right? I will make sure that we're very clear on where we should cut right through.
Somebody's heads are gonna roll.
I know, so when are footings going in, you know?
Um, I don't know exactly, but I I expect with. The weather and that's showing little chance of rain.
Yes.
I would expect that they're gonna be out here in the next couple of days uh starting to set formwork for footings.
And when are we starting our Thursday morning meetings? Not this week, but probably the following week, are you just gonna send out an email?
Yep, yep, I'll send out a meeting invite to everybody.
Okay. Anyone on the board have any other questions for him on that?
We have fruit rolls every Thursday, Bruce.
I can bring fruit.
I suppose I could find rolls. So Dan's responsible for the coffee, I'm just saying that right of.
So before we get off all this bidding things, Nick, I have a curiosity question as to whether or not. The town, when we go out to bid for something, I'm not talking about anything specific right now. Can we put language in a bid that says something like this and. And any, all final numbers that are within. Two percent of one another are gonna be considered equal as per monetary value. And the reason I'm saying that is that when bids are really, really close together. It'd be nice to look at all the other little things in the bid to differentiate somebody. Is it, can you do that kind of language?
Well, the state bidding law.
Nick, you might, you have done you.
Uh, the state bidding law requires you on every bid to review the low bid for the lowest responsible bidder. So um even if you have two bids that are close. Uh, but one is lower and that bidder you have had. Some experience with that would disqualify them as the lowest responsible bidder. You can reject that that bid. So, you know, for all intents and purposes, state law is going to prefer the lowest bid. So long as that that bidder can actually. Perform on that bid as determined by the by the top board. So I I don't know that it would be permissible to equalize bids that are close. Um, but it should really go to, the inquiry should really go to whether the. The bidders have the sufficient wherewithal and capacity to do the the job. That being said, state law is very clear that you can't. You cannot prefer local vendors over non-local vendors just because they're local, right? So the the concern with that type of a concept would be. You're going to equalize those bids that are close and you're gonna prefer the one that's local to the community or or nearby. Uh, so I don't think I would move in in that direction, but I do think. When there are bids that are that are close, that we spend. Uh, as much time as we need to make a determination as to who the lowest responsible bidder is.
Right? Why does it keep going out? I've tainted on road connections on the side of the town, um, there's a map on your um. Desk today, and I know Lee is online to speak to this, go ahead, Lee.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair members of the board. Um, would you like me to try and put this up on the screen at all?
Sure, if you want to, go ahead.
I think you have to approve him to.
Yeah.
Let me see, share. This is one can, one can, so he can, he's a participant, he can.
All right. Says host disabled participant screen sharing.
Oh my gosh. Let me share it just a second. I think I got it online, just a moment. Here we go. All right. There we go.
Excellent, thank you. So Madam Chair members of the board, um, as you know, we've had some discussions over uh the last few months about um trying to. Identify um intersections along Highway thirty five and. County Road E in relation to some of the potential and even somewhat more close to pending developments in the area. Um, as you know, we've had this in preliminary discussions with the state uh and the county. Um, and we've put forth several concepts uh before the board in the past. And uh somewhat recently, we had an open house where we invited people in the area to come in and. And look at some of those concepts and. Uh, give their opinions, uh I think we reported on all of that the last meeting. So since that meeting, um Phil has put together this map, which kind of incorporates. Uh, some of the, all of the comments and and thoughts that that are current at the moment about. Some of the alignments of some of these roadways. Um, he's also added uh some information in that lower left hand corner. It kind of helps um define and identify. Um, what these intersections are, whether they're future or existing. Uh, and some definitions below that. So our intent this evening, I think, well, the other thing to to notice is that. We do have that connection uh between that north-south area, just east of Highway sixty four.
Right there.
Uh, there was a fairly. Um. Consistent consensus that for. Uh. Public safety, that that would be an important connection. So we're showing that uh on this map and the intent tonight was just to basically forward you this draft. Give you the board some time until the next meeting to kind of ruminate on it. At your leisure, uh we'd probably want to look uh at looking at this a little bit more in detail at the next meeting with Phil uh present. Before we take this map and send it back off to the state and the county. Um. With a little higher level of this is where we really want to be. Uh, as a town and these intersections uh to get some final feedback and start up the steps to make it an official map.
Anyone have any questions for him? We've seen it before, it's gone through some rewrites. Um. And you've, you have each, once we approve this next month, then you will go to the DOTs and talk to them.
Yep, we will, we will let the DOTs know that um this is what the town is thinking and and what they want. Um, if there's any further. Feedback from the state or the county, you know, that that could make a tweak, obviously, we will. Discuss that with the state and and bring any of that back to the board. Um, but I think we're we're awfully close to what. Meets the requirements, you know, at the moment, I think, you know, obviously, looking at the intersection of C and D there along thirty five. Um, you know, that's probably slightly less than the the typical. Um. Spacing, but again, I think the state realizes that. You know, there's got to be access for those properties, so.
Okay, anyone have any questions for him? You have to come up to the microphone so he can hear you, he won't be able to hear you back there.
Is this current version available on the website or is it necessary to make a public record request in order to see it?
Um, we haven't put on the website because this is still a draft. But now that we've seen the draft and the board will decide next month, I suppose we can put it on now. Right now, but prior to this, it's just been a working document, we haven't had any decisions.
So you, it'll be marked draft, but it'll be on the website.
Is that okay? You can do that, okay. And anyone else here from the board that wants to speak to the attorney, or I'm sorry, the engineer? I said, all right, thank you, Lee.
Just one quick last comment, uh this, the the version that I sent you did not have the word draft on it, um, so I'll make sure I send you the one that says draft.
Sure, that'll be great, thank you. All right, we will move on to um. The Church Street project. I did not get a pay request this time, where are we on, at on that?
Uh, Madam Chair members of the board, we do have a couple of punch list items left, they are uh in the ravine area and have to do with. Uh vegetation and establishment of that. So we're still working with the contractor on getting that finalized, uh we certainly are trying to work very hard and. Uh encouraging the contractor to get that done so that we can bring you a final pay request at the next meeting.
Perfect. Anyone have any questions on that for him? Go ahead. Yeah, you gotta, you have to mute so you can hear you.
Sorry about that. On Sixtieth Street, um. They've they've removed the barriers that were up there during the construction period. But the barriers are gone now and basically uh Sixtieth Street is open to the south now off County Road E. And there's no stop sign coming out. Should that be part of the project that if they remove barriers to open a, even if it's not, I mean officially open. That a stop sign be provided out there, right now someone could be exiting Sixty Street, Sixtieth Street at night. And drive right into a car in County Road E.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that, I appreciate you bringing that to our attention.
Anything else from anyone? All right, we'll move on to public works. Um, we have before us the resolution which I provided to um. Nick. We have to change the public hearing to August eighth because there's not enough timeframe. Um, that would allowed it to take place sooner than that. And. And talking to Doug Zoller, this has the information, this map that was supplied to us on the CSM is the information for the road. So all this resolution states is that we're having a notice of a public hearing to discontinue a roadway. In the entirety of one thirty third off of eighty third street. It's owned by one landowner, so we'll be able to, I believe, I shouldn't say that, I should look again. Yes, it's owned by the same landowner on both sides of it, so he will. Will deed that back to them. Is what will happen, the orfs. Does anyone have any questions about this? Does anyone want to make this motion? You want me to make it? I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash oh four. For the discontinuance of one thirty third avenue in the town of St. Joseph's, St. Croix County, and a public hearing to be set on August eighth at seven o'clock.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, I just. Just a moment. I think that date's wrong. Oh my goodness. It's a class three notice. Just a second, give me a second, I think it's gotta be September. I apologize, that's my fault, just a moment. I'm the first to admit, let's see. I have to see if you can get it in three times, one, two, three. Yep, she can if she sends it tomorrow, so that will work. Um, since it's a resolution, it's a roll call vote. That's okay.
Justin Cruz. Chris Marshall.
Aye.
Dan Gavin.
Aye.
Teresa Johnson.
Aye, and you have to say Matt.
And Matt Moore.
Matt Moore is not here, so motion carried. On to um twenty twenty four road maintenance update and pay request, um Lee, do you have anything on that?
Yes, Madam Chair members of the board, real quick, uh there wasn't a pay request uh this time because they they finished up their. Uh, patching and whatnot prior to the previous meeting. Um, the schedule that they have anticipates that they will get some spray patching done or the spray patching done this week. Um, I have not followed up to see if they've been able to get out yet on that. Uh, I'll find that out tomorrow. Um. They will begin crack feeling, crack filling the week of July twenty ninth, followed by chip sealing on the week of August twelfth. So that's the, that is the schedule um that we have and certainly we're. Waiting with anticipation to get that done.
Anybody have any questions for him on that? All right, we will move on to seal coating every three years after install. With monies from the developers, do you have something you wanted to share with us on that?
So Madam Chair members of the board, at the last meeting. Uh, there was a request to understand what the potential costs would be to seal coat. The roads that were part of the recent major roadway project. And so we did utilizing this year's seal coat costs and estimating what that would be for these new roads. Newer roads, um, the total amount to seal coat all of those roads. Uh, is approximately eight hundred and seventy one thousand dollars.
That's a chunk. So that was requested by, I can't remember who on the board asked for that number.
I believe it was Dan Gavin.
Dan. Um, anyone have any questions for him on that? Well, I'll put this back on the next agenda for next month. To talk a little bit more about that and how that all works. But does anyone have any questions for, that you want Lee to bring back? Okay, thank you for that information, Lee. Um. I'm trying to see if there's anything else we need him on here for. No, Lee, I think you're done. So thank you.
Thank you very much, have a great evening.
You too, thanks. Um, update on the tractor maintenance, anything we need to know, Chris?
Our tractor went to Baraboo today. To get its upgrades from. The factory to bring it back into. Working order as it first came to us.
Okay.
Uh, and then it will return. And then we will negotiate. What our cost is after. International. Looks at all the costs.
Okay.
I. I had spoke for the town and said I would. Um. Review what parts I would accept as our responsibility and what parts belong to the warranty.
Okay.
So that's where we are on that.
Anyone have any questions for him on that?
And and uh another update is next week I'm. Gonna sit down with a dealership and look at specs. For. A new tractor and we'll see how that goes.
When do you expect to hear back from them?
From which? From Baraboo?
Yeah.
I let them operate at their own speed. I let them operate at their own speed, they told me they had the parts in there, so I would imagine a couple days only.
Perfect, and then we should just say that that last check that we wrote to them back in. May, we voided.
Will probably be destroyed because I've. Had several conversations with. Warranty needs to be in play and they admitted that. The factory is looking at warranty.
Perfect, any other questions for him? All right, on to update on tree removal, I see that we just had another check for. Willow River.
Yeah.
And I've got a list going for hopefully for fall. But I don't know where you're at, we haven't had it a whole lot come down in these last rainstorms, which is encouraging. Well, we'll pay, there's always more ash out.
Rain, things will get longer.
Yeah. And the ash are trying to tip over. Increase in pay for tractor drivers, you asked for this to be put on the agenda?
Yes. I make a motion. To bring our. Three tractor drivers up to the top pay they've been producing. And, uh. Operating correctly and they deserve to go to the top pay that we had discussed before.
I think that was twenty eight dollars?
Correct.
Okay, just so everyone knows where. Isn't one of them up there and two of them are not?
I would have to refer to the.
Yes.
Clerk.
You're saying yes?
Yes.
Yeah. One's a twenty five, one's a twenty eight and one's a twenty five.
Then two.
So it's a two.
Two drivers.
Yeah. Anyone have any questions for him on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll second his motion then we.
Oh, I'm sorry, second it, and then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or passes, thank you. Um, no parking signs on Perch Lake Road, I received a multitude of complaints. Fourth of July week, not just fourth of July, but fourth of July week. Because what's happening is that Homestead Park. Um, once their parking lots are filled, they put no more parking, they close the park down. So anybody that wants to go to Homestead has to walk in. And they're parking on the road from. Up the hill to all the way around the lake and this direction towards E. And my son frequents it and he was there the weekend before. And he was one of the last vehicles into the park, and he said by the time he left, there were cars all the way down past the lake and towards B, E, I mean. He said. He has an issue with the fact that everyone pays the same amount of money going in there, whether you live here or not live here, but that's a whole different tune. Anyway, I know Dan called me because he said it was almost impassable, I've had other residents of that area call me because it was almost impassable. With people parking on both sides, and we've lost some of the no parking that were along the lake.
Ah.
So, I mean, Dan, you, you saw it firsthand, you can speak to it.
Well, this issue, I guess. It's very seasonal.
Yes.
There's no question about that, and it's, it's going to be this weekend too, it's going to be in the nineties, so it'll be exactly the same. If you want to drive over and look at it, but. People follow the rules when there's a no parking sign there, because all the cars that were parking on the road. And let's call it on the west side of, of Perch Lake Road up towards County Road E, they were all parked beyond the no parking signs. Okay? All right, but there are cars that park temporarily down on the road to unload and sting things like that, but then they go move, I mean, that, that really isn't much. But there's a couple of no parking signs that are missing along the road, okay, there's no question, that, that was.
Where the lake is.
But the county actually asked us a year or two ago if they could put up no parking signs on our road. And they did that in front of the entrance to the parking lot for almost a quarter mile in each direction. Okay? Because they didn't want people parking on Perch Lake Road and walking into the park. Okay? And so those signs already exist there. The question is, why don't we just, and maybe the county will, as, working with the county, do the same thing? End to end on Perch Lake Road from County Road E to Sixtieth.
I'm having deja vu, I've had this, we had this, this exact conversation.
Year ago.
Last year, and we, I had.
I put up the signs, man.
I, I was the one who made the motion to get the signs.
So it sounds like we're doing the whole length.
I think from Sixtieth to E.
Yeah. Well, I had people fucking.
Kind of done. I really am kind of done.
I'm fine with that, I'll order them from Dexter, they'll be up.
But should the, the county signs look different than the town signs? That's why I say, I mean, can we work with the county?
Both work the same?
Well, they do, but let's make, let's be consistent along the end to end.
I agree with him that we should make a motion tonight to no park, put no parking signs on the length of that road. But allow me to give Jason a call and see if the county wants to share in the cost for this.
All right, you.
Because I would rather have them share than us have to do it all.
That's fine.
Are you okay with that? Is that what you meant?
Second.
What?
No, no, not yet.
There may need to be an exception for, um. Residents to have people park on the road if, under certain situations. Let's say somebody's having a graduation party in the spring. Okay, and you see it in every neighborhood, driveway, those cars parked all. Whenever there's a graduation.
We should contact the town and we can give them flyers to put in their windows or something for that date.
And the other thing is, is we have parking for parties in the zoning. It's all laid out in there.
Yeah.
We have spent a significant amount of time, money and effort to set it up so that people who want to have one day parties and. How they need to park out there, Anton, and that whole team have done a fantastic job laying out scenarios.
So I'll make a motion then that the town. Approve Perch Lake Road to be no parking on both sides of the road from County Road E to Sixtieth Street.
Second.
And to see if county will help, did you have that in there?
And, uh, and Teresa will contact the county to see, see if they'll share in the expensive placement of the signs.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We're coming down to parks, I guess I have a variety of people here. I, I know you're here for the ordinance, what are you people here for? Just, just having fun with us, okay? That's fine, just making sure, I'm going to make a motion to bring Plan Commission update to ordinances. B one, B I up to this point in the agenda. Is there a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so this is a membrane structure and temporary structure ordinance that. You put together, so why don't you go through that with us?
Yeah, uh, thank you, head of the chair. So what you have, you'll recall last month, we worked through an initial draft, Attorney Drew Nelson was here. He represents Jethro and, and big guys. There were some questions about what was, what was put together, whether it was related only to commercial or whether it was. Related to residential or unimproved properties. And so I worked through and incorporated a number of. The concepts that we had discussed at the last meeting. Uh, which is why you have this just for review and additional discussion. Um, and if there's anything else that we want to, to change. Or modify at this point. We can certainly do that, otherwise we'd probably look to, to put this on, uh, for approval and consideration, or consideration and approval next month. Again, sort of the overall concept here is that with respect to membrane structures. And temporary structures on commercial properties that we incorporate. Uh, the building code, the uniform building code requirements, which. Are those requirements that our building official already uses. To review these structures. That we incorporate those into our ordinances. Uh, with anything else that we want to include that is local regulation. That is consistent with and not contradictory to. Either the building code. Or the state regulations that also adopt the building code. So there was discussion at the last meeting about, you know, why are we using, uh, the international building code? And the reason is because that's the code that state structure, that state regulation. Uh, through the Department of, of Safety and Professional Services adopts into state. Regulation, right? So that's what it brings in. And we are clarifying through this ordinance that this is how we review these, these types of, of structures. Uh, Jay made a good point at the last meeting to say, well, which version of the, uh, IBC are we using? Uh, so you'll see in ninety two dash three, sub C and sub E, we note that it's the two thousand eighteen version. Of the international building code. Uh, there were questions that Attorney Nelson raised regarding the owner. And whether that meant the owner of the property or the owner of the tent structure. Uh, this definition has been revised, updated, uh, to state that the owner means any person or corporate entity. Having an ownership interest. In the land upon which a membrane or temporary structure is constructed or planned to be constructed, owner of the property. Not the owner of the tent. We're not looking to regulate the owners of tents or membrane structures. We are looking to, to provide rules and direction to those that own the land on which the membrane structure is, is going to be located. The only local regulations that are in this, and we discussed this the, the last time. Uh, but if you look to ninety two dash five. Regulation of membrane structures and ninety two dash seven regulation of temporary structures. The items are the same, uh, in A, B, C, D and E for both of those sections. Um, and they are as follows, and these requirements are not in the IBC, they're not in state regulations, uh, but they are local requirements. The membrane structure, temporary structure shall be wholly located on the owner's property with a minimum separation of ten feet from the principal structure. That faces the property's front yard. The building inspector shall inquire, identify the required number of portable restrooms required. Uh, to support the structure based on the occupancy load. Ingress and egress, egress to the structure shall comply with and be in accordance with the ADA. Entrances and exits to the membrane structure shall be clearly marked. Uh, in such quantity and locations as directed by the fire department or the building inspector. Exit signs shall be secured down, required to have emergency illumination. And the structure shall not restrict access to rights of way, public easements, fire lanes, fire department connections. Or other life safety elements requiring accessibility. All of those requirements are well within the town's police power. Um, and are, uh, completely appropriate for inclusion within this ordinance. There was some question about how we classify membrane structures versus. Uh, temporary structures, because there's not a building permit requirement for membrane structures. There is a building permit requirement for, for temporary structures. That is not a decision that this town board makes, it is a determination that the building official makes. Uh, based on the application or based on the particular structure, uh, we're not changing that. That's not going to change at all, and it's not the intent of this ordinance, uh, to say that we're going to make those determinations, that's left to the sound discretion. Of the, of the building official. And then you'll note that I included a specific exclusion. At.
Ninety two six.
Ninety two six, thank you, Teresa. Exemptions parcels primarily used for non-commercial use detached one and two family dwellings, townhouses up to three stories and unimproved parcels shall be exempt from the requirements of this ordinance. Trying to make it clear that if it's a residential use, a non-commercial use, or an unimproved parcel, a piece of farmland or whatnot. Uh, these, uh, requirements do not apply, so, you know, really just trying to. Put this in place and make it clear that we're dealing, you know, really just with commercial part, uh, parcels. I didn't use that specific phrase because there may be other non-residential. Uses. That I can't come up with. Uh, but that would not be exempt and that would require, uh, compliance with this particular order. So we, we've exempted out essentially residential uses. You know, non-commercial type uses, not business type uses, um, and unimproved parcels. But again, the goal is really just to direct anybody who reads this ordinance. Back to the international building code, so they know that they have to deal with. And work directly with our building official, uh, and then we've got those five local. Regulations that are really all life safety issues, uh, that are critical to any structure. So that's, I, I think we got a little bogged down in, in kind of. A number of the questions last time. Um, and there's, there's no intent other than to just make sure that on this, uh, dealing with these types of structures. That we're pointing folks back to the IBC, back to our building official. And then we have this overlay of these five additional life, life safety requirements, uh, that are really critical to protecting, uh. The folks that are using the structures.
Anyone on the board have any questions for him on this? Yes, sir.
I have a question, do we know what the associated fee scale or fee numbers are going to be?
We didn't, we didn't set that up yet because that's on our fee schedule, so we can talk about that next time, what we think it should be. The penalties are on there, but not the fees, the fee goes in the fee schedule.
And, and remember, there's, there's no building permit for membrane structures. And there may be for temporary structures, so. I think what I'd like to do is if. Everybody is in general agreement, and again, we're not taking action on this. Uh, but that this is the type of ordinance that we're going to move forward with. Uh, I think I'd reach back out to our building official then to review those fees. To make sure, and I forget what it is, I know it was, it was onerous the last time you worked through it, it was, it was expensive. But that's not the goal, this isn't a penalty. The, the goal is to cover the cost of the inspector's time.
Yep.
To, you know, work through this process and, you know, whether it's five hundred bucks or. I think it's a thousand dollars right now, or maybe more than that. Uh, but we should, we should make sure that that B is right sized. Uh, so that it's not punitive, but that it covers the cost, the actual cost associated with the work being done of a building official.
You wanted to say something?
Yes, is, is there? Businesses here tonight that have a new copy of this. Uh, ordinance and do they feel this is something that they can? Follow and understand?
Nobody has a new copy of the ordinance, other than, that's the board, I have it, I brought it.
He brought it.
I apologize, I thought I had sent it to Terry in advance.
Okay.
So unfortunately, no one has it.
But I can, I can leave copies up here for anybody that wants them. And we can certainly take comment again if you'd like.
Because we're not going to make a decision on it because it's too, we haven't had a chance to review.
No, I, I understand that, I just, I just. Feel it's an opportunity for businesses to educate the board if, if there's any. Uh, opportunity for them to speak on behalf of this ordinance. That's all I'm.
Okay, anyone else, you want to say something else, Dan?
Nope.
Okay.
Does anybody have any input?
Do you have any copies that you want to give me and?
Yeah, it'd be nice to. I, I know a ballpark number of what it might cost somebody for their permit inspections and fees.
Well, that's how it comes to us.
You know, it'd be nice to have a ballpark number.
When I, when I worked through this a year ago, year and a half ago with Todd Dolan. Uh, I want to say that he, he figured the number would be. Five hundred to seven hundred and fifty, fifty dollars. That it would, it would not exceed a thousand dollars, and it could be lesser.
Plus whatever the town has for their application fee, which.
No, that would be the application.
Oh, that would.
The application fee is only intended, you know, really just to.
Well, but then are there going to be costs associated with the inspections?
Follow up inspections, yes.
No, that's what I'm wondering, what, what, what can we expect of the total process to cost?
But remember, this is, it's only a short term, you know, so it's like, it's a hundred and eighty days, so. You know, once Todd goes out there and approves a short term, whether it's a tangent, or whether it's some of the short term type of structure. You know, unless there's a complaint, an enforcement complaint, you really shouldn't have to go out there again.
One time should do it, because it's electrical.
Right, yeah. So, but then I'll follow up with them, but I'll get some information from them.
But what I'm hearing about just some, I have a feeling that that number would be, would be less than a thousand dollars after, when it's all done.
That's what I was told previously.
Yeah. I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right, couple of questions for you. Uh, do you guys have a list of references, you say this is all about safety? Do you have a list of references of? Uh, people that have been hurt by tents in Saint Joe Township? Do you have a list of references of uh people that have been hurt by tents in Saint Joe Township? Um, uh why we're doing this?
The the reason we're doing it is is because it came on recommendation from our building official, these are the regulations already. And and so the I B C right now without.
So Todd Dolan's office recommended this?
These are building efficient.
Okay.
So, I'm not this specific ordinance, uh but he recommended, or they've been part of this process of reviewing. The ordinance to help provide direction, because right now, he's enforcing the I B C, that's what he applies. Right? And everybody says, well, why do you apply the I B C? And he says, well, because that's what state law says and and state law incorporates the I B C. So to, in an effort to try to clarify this and to incorporate it into. What we have for information for folks who are out on our website looking at it going. What what says that we're using the I B C while we're effectively just incorporating it into the city's code, or even the town's code? Uh and then adding those other few that aren't anywhere, but that are part of Todd's inspection criteria at this point.
Okay, so I just want to give you a little history on the tent at Big Guys. Um had it up for a year and a half before I was ever even contacted about needing a permit. Then I was told to go to Todd Dolan's office and get a permit. He says, we don't have permits for that. It took eleven weeks holding up a whole season of volleyball. That we couldn't use our tent because it was red-tagged. When there was no. Ordinances, there was nothing through him that he could do. Their office, when they came out to inspect the tent, said it seems like your town uses us as a hot iron against you. I'm about sick of this bubble wrapping these people in this town for something that hasn't gone wrong. Let's look back at the lighting ordinance, the noise ordinance. All off of one complaint, and then they are become anonymous complaints. This is really getting sickening. Drew Nelson. Hundred thousand dollars worth of lawyers, and you guys have never made us do a thing because everything that you bring against us. Is not right, and it's not right against this town. Do you know that Pete Malloy puts up tents? Twenty, thirty times a year, and you're gonna charge a thousand bucks a tent? They go up for a weekend, they come back down, they go up for a day, they come back down. He would have to get a permit for every single tent and have every single tent. Inspected, guess when they go up? Friday night, Saturday morning, your inspectors will be doing the inspecting then. This. Stop making ordinances to bubble wrap something that has never been a problem. That's what I'm here to tell you guys. So when I did go to get this permit for my temporary tent, I bring a check already filled out. You know what they tell me? You're being fined because you already had your tent up. I had a tent up that had no thing to get a permit for, and now I'm getting fined double. So now we're talking four or five thousand dollars that I paid. Like, I I liked your uh, what was your words that you used tonight? Unjustly burdened. And I'm telling you what. Just because something happens at Big Guys, you don't need to blanket something over this whole town. Chris, do you go by and bring porta-potties to people that have giant tents as big as mine in their yard for weddings? Graduations, family reunions? Yeah, I see it all over because we're catering those things. Giant tents in people's yards that are on a thirty-degree angle up over a hump. And now you want to exclude those people? Like, none of this makes sense. So I just want to know, who decides on the town board or in this facility? Who gets fined for having something up because it wasn't the building inspector? Who decides that? Who gives the okay, let's fine him? Can I get an answer?
I understood it was up to the building inspector because he, we have it in our ordinance that states that if you get a permit after. It is erected, whatever that may be, it is double, and I know he has assessed that to others for other. We have one right now that we're waiting on in September that, a building that was built without a permit. And they've been assessed double on.
So this is a temporary tent. That I was charged a commercial by square footage, charged that type of fee to put up a tent. And then doubled after it had already been up a year and a half. And I was told directly by him is this has been told to us by your town that is double the fee.
It's in our fee schedule, in our ordinance, yes, he's right on that.
But you didn't have anything for tents, he didn't have anything for tents, and I'm being penalized. This is all just like, why are we, why are we trying to bubble wrap this community in things that things haven't gone wrong? I just want you guys to think about that before you board on this next month.
I appreciate that, thank you so much.
Thank you. And those, those comments are fair, but let me, I I'm happy to circulate a letter dated January third of twenty twenty one. That was uh drafted by and provided by Alcroy Inspections. To Attorney Drew Nelson, copied to Mr. Lund. Uh and copied to the town, uh copied to my colleague at the time, Chris Nelson. Uh which walks through a number of these issues. Again, I wasn't involved in this back at that that time, but I recall when I started working on this. You know, looking, reviewing the documentation that was provided by Alcroy. And and to say our building official threw up their hands and said, we don't know what the town's doing, is just, that's just not accurate. And so, and there's a, there's a record of discussions back and and forth, so. This isn't about bubble wrapping anything, I don't want to get into an argument tonight. This is, it's, it's a matter of looking at this issue, and if the town board wants to move forward with it. Then, as it did previously to say, we're going to provide direction to people so that we actually have uh clear ordinances which. Reference and Alcroy has said it very clearly here, uh that the uh city has adopted. Uh Wisconsin Commercial Code, the I B, and that code adopts the two thousand fifteen I B C. Uh the I B C has definitions. Uh all of this stuff was was provided uh at this time back in in twenty twenty one. So, you know, I, there's, there's not an effort by any stretch to. Hide the ball or bubble wrap or do anything other than to say to the public. This is the code this town uses, and if you want to put a tent up, you can put a tent up. But here's the direction that you have to follow so that you're not surprised when. The building official says. You have to comply with some requirements, right? I mean, that's all we're trying to do is to provide the roadmap. To the actual requirements, so that if there is a map, if there is a tent that goes up, and you get a call from the building official. That you know where it's coming from. Now, everybody makes the argument in towns, well, what about that guy? Well, if that guy has an issue as well, if in fact there is a complaint. And if in fact the town is required to enforce. We operate on a complaint-based system, we do not have somebody that drives around town looking for problems. Though people may think Jay does, uh but that's not, that's not the case, right? And so, all we can do. Is provide the rules to everybody, we don't pick winners and losers, we apply. Our rules fairly, and all we're trying to do by this particular ordinance. Is to publish the rules that are already the requirements. That are somewhat a mystery because the question comes up and and Todd then says, well, you know, here's, here's what the town has adopted. And here's how it's adopted through the state, and here's how it gets to the I B C. That is already the set of requirements that we're dealing with, all we're doing is putting it on paper.
So, I'd like to end this. On a point of, I want. The working relationship. I guess it's gonna be three ways. St. Croix inspections. Commercial entities. And the town, I would like. Peace. Respect, understanding. And. With this new ordinance coming in, is it something that commercial properties can work with? I I don't think we need to spend any more time on this stuff, we're here for. Everyone and. I'd like to know that we have a relationship. Not just a mystery.
I I I agree, and maybe we just need to send it out to our commercial entities that do put tents up and have have them weigh in.
I would like them to weigh in because I'd like to hear from, is this something that you can operate under? Where we have peace here and understanding with one another that we don't have to. Do this anymore, that you can move on making an income and supporting the community.
Yeah. Anyone else have anything to say on the board? I'll let him have another couple of minutes.
I just want to give you a little more insight on when you start talking about five hundred, a thousand dollars. Do you know where that money has to now get charged to? Somebody's having a party. At a business, they they are, that's going back to them. So if I put up extra tents, I have to charge my people. More. Same with the Willow, same with Malloy, same with the golf course. You guys gotta really think about what you're doing here. It came as a recommendation, you don't have to do it. Use your head of what you're gonna do to the town and the people that are using these commercial spaces that are now they're gonna inherit all of this debt.
I I I'm not meaning to cut you off, I apologize, I'll let you finish it, okay? So the one thing I want to point out here, and and this is a, this is a point I I want to make really clear. When you look at an ordinance in this way. It shouldn't just be about the historical, what has happened. Because I have seen situations where it was never a problem. Until this incident, and then. What inevitably happens is that something dreadful occurs. And then someone comes back and goes, hey, town board, why didn't you guys think to tell somebody? And that's what happens, and I agree.
So if something happens, you would be, the town board would be responsible?
Not responsible, but people will ask us, why didn't you guys do something to prevent this from happening? How come you weren't enforcing X, Y, Z? Why did you make it so much harder to go do this, that, or the other thing? I will tell you that in sitting here for my second term. I have had more people tell me I did it right and did it wrong at the same time, no matter which choice I made. To me, when I read this, and I don't want this to be something that's like. A a penalty to any business that operates, right? Because that's not fair to you guys, this isn't meant to be a hindrance. I don't think, like, if I'm reading this, right, and I'm looking at the regulations. And I see something that says you have to make sure that people can get in, that's ADA compliant. Okay, well, that that act was put in before I was born, I would hope we all know that. To me, when I'm reading this, it just looks like we have this kind of ambiguity to whatever one needed to follow. And now it's on paper, and I'm not trying to call out big guys, I'm not trying to call out anyone else who does this. But when I sit through the zoning ordinances and we talk about these things, and I've, we talk about them for hours. The one thing that it always comes back to is, it's not the folks who do the right thing, it's the people who come along who are like. Yeah, one entrance and one exit's fine, and then the tent burns down filled with Christmas trees and you end up with. Well, why did the town not make this more clear, right? So. It's always the people who make it a problem, and when you can get in front of an ordinance and say, we wrote it down. We did what we could as an entity to prevent it to become a problem, that's where I look at this. What's happened with the penalties or what happened with? From twenty twenty one, I don't know the entire story. I'm sure that at some point, there should have been something more done, because there's always that, we should have always done something more. We're now trying to do something more and not make it. A problem amongst the town and big guys or the town and so and so.
I'm I'm just trying to protect everybody else because I already paid. For a permit, sure, double paid for a permit.
Okay.
Commercial building, like that's what they're gonna be paying is if they put a sixty by eighty tent up, that goes by square footage. That's what I had to pay.
And I don't know.
These are gonna be ridiculous. Numbers.
I think that the reverse of the conversation is, and I, I understand your point, I do. The reverse of the conversation is. Someone comes in and puts in a tree farm, they don't comply, the tree farm burns down. Did that mean that no incident happened at Big Guys? That's true. Nothing happened, but that doesn't mean that this doesn't prevent or try to prevent that from happening.
Justin, if I, if I could add though, I mean, this is, the ordinance that we're talking about doesn't create an. Doesn't create anything. It just adopts and states that the city, or that the town, that the town follows the international building. Right? So that's, that's all it says, it's, it's just a resuscitation of the town.
So noticing what it. People should have been following this no, no matter what, it's just us saying we should follow this?
This, no, this is what the building official is is enforcing. But but the real issue here, and I just go back to this letter, it's not with this town board. I mean, the the issue is that the building official takes a particular view of these structures. And in this letter from twenty twenty one I referenced, he states there is no question that a building permit. And the appropriate inspections are required for the tent erected. Also, the tent is only considered temporary if if it is erected for less than a hundred and eighty days. And so that's, that's an application by our building official, that has nothing to do with. With you guys, that's his, his interpretation, all we're trying to do is point the public back to the rules, right? So it's, this is not about imposing new fees, it's not about creating new requirements. These are requirements that are already being enforced. So that when somebody looks it up on the town's website says, well, Todd, you're saying. That I have to follow this rule. Teresa, you're saying, or Todd is saying, point me to where it says in your ordinances that you have to follow the rules. All we're doing is we're putting in our ordinances so that you can then reference it back. That, that's it, I understand you're trying to protect the other business owners, I I get that, uh I think we should send it out.
Yeah.
Uh to the the business owners in in town and and allow for comment, I think that's a great idea. But I don't want there to be any misconceptions that the town is being asked to approve. New fees on businesses, that this is gonna cost more for customers. It's not the discussion, the discussion is.
I'm just letting you know that's the reality of it.
Well, but it's not, it's not new, this, but but even if this doesn't go into the ordinances. The building official's interpretation is still going to be based upon the state code and the international building code. So it's not, this doesn't change that, your communication, a a business owner's communication with the building official. Is their communication with the building official, and we contract with the building official to administer our our code. So this ordinance doesn't have anything to do with that, it's not, it's not going to change how you interact with Alcroy. And and Todd Dolan's office, and if there's a disagreement about how those codes get applied. Well, that's a, that's a different disagreement than what we're talking about at the table tonight.
Okay, I'm just looking at a timeline, I'm not sure how long Todd Dolan has been uh the inspector out here. But the Willow River Inn, every single year put up a sixty by eighty tent, same size as mine, for the chicken and corn feed, it was up for a week. Todd Dolan, you can drive right by there, everybody can drive by there and see it. Nothing was done. When they come out and tell me that I don't know why they use us as a hot iron against you. That's a little alarming. This is an employee telling me that, this is. that's a little alarming. This is an employee telling me that. This is what they're hearing in the office. That's alarming.
That's different than Todd Dolan telling you that.
Ten minutes, they were there the first time inspecting the tent. They said, we really don't know what to do, but if you were to put up sidewalls, you would have to have, uh, three exit signs. Because obviously you know where to exit an open walled tent. It's called anywhere, right? So we put it all up. The second time they're out there, she's out there for three minutes and gone. And you guys are talking about five hundred and thousand dollar fees? Like, I, I just don't get it. None of it adds up. I'm a numbers guy. Reality, I just.
I appreciate your comments and what we'll do is we'll bring this back on the next agenda and get some input from our building inspector and go from there.
Can we also send this out to the, the final copy to our?
This draft copy.
Yes. I apologize. This draft copy out to the various entities that will be impacted.
Yep, we will do that. Thank you. Thank you for coming. All right, back up to Parks, Trails and Rack. Update on the playground and plans to be completed, and you're asking for an additional amount to finish this playground? Go ahead.
Can you hear me now? Okay. My name is Nina Borna. I'm from the park committee. I have some more pleasant things to, to talk today. I, yes. I was at the playfield, uh, showing my daughter, uh, the playground there. And there came a couple to me and said, oh, who did the design of this park? This is one of the beautiful, the nicest park we have around in this neighborhood. They were sitting on the bench underneath a tree. The kids were sliding on the slide and they really enjoyed it. So that is a good news. And, um, so the reason we're here is there's only one last thing to finish the playground, which is the rain garden. I sent you a quote, how much it would cost. We have some, I think, uh, there's some labor involved. I talked to Todd Tuma because we need some stones. And the labor he said would be thousand dollars. He is giving the stones because he has a lot of big boulders. Uh, he, he has around his property and can donate them. And then, uh, we still have some mulch left from the last time, so I did not include it because we have mulch left from the, the, the plant, the last planting. And then we need a little bit of compost soil, which I checked in Somerset, they have the cheapest compost. We don't need very much because the soil is pretty good. It infiltrates pretty quick. But if we put, put some plants in there, they need some decent, uh, soil to, to grow. So the plantings are coming up to six hundred and nineteen dollars because we need a lot of plants to absorb the water when the rain garden is there. The total cost will be nineteen hundred and sixty-four dollars. So that is what we are asking to finish this year, the last little bit of the playground. Our budget, uh, Jan is not here. She is the one in charge of the budget. I think we're very on the limit, but, uh, we also discussed that maybe what we can do is a line item transfer. Because, uh, by the bike, um, bike coalition, they were not going to do anything this year for sure. And they have some allocated money so that we can finish it this year. So that was one option. So in case we're a little bit short, uh, that we can finish this project this year. And that's what we're really asking you because we have put so much work in there. And thanks to all the volunteers, we have saved a lot of money here in this playground. So I hope we can finish it next month. We still have some stones laying there to be placed. We have the mulch laying there. It's just getting the plants and we have the volunteers to, um, to plant it.
I have to go to the meeting.
Good Lord, why is that?
So I don't know where in the parks discussion we're going to discuss this, but did you receive an email from the property management company?
No, on the, from the.
It came today or yesterday. It came from Mike Martin.
Well, Kerry can forward it on to the appropriate people. And then I guess we can speak on it next month. Is that how?
Well, I think we need to talk about it. We have this, we have this project on our agenda so we can for sure, because it's part of the.
All right, so the email, pretty much I'll sum it up in Chris Marshall's terms, is the rocks you put out there, kids are throwing all over the place. What do we want to do about it?
The kids are throwing rocks over the place?
All the small rocks that you wanted there. They're throwing them all over the place and carrying them around.
So, uh, I'll, I'll read it out here real quick.
Thank you.
Um, we received a, an email, uh, that says, I wanted to express some concern. The new rocks that were placed under the bridge between the playground and the new slides on the hill have become a toy for the children playing around the property. Weekly, we find them in the grass. Uh, we are doing our best not to hit them as they become projectiles that can hurt or injure, uh, residents who are playing or near at the time. Uh, it also causes excessive damage to the equipment as they are mowing. So part of the conversation that, um, I think, uh, Supervisor Marshall wants to have is, what do we do to, um, prevent this?
Well, this is something new. I know there is, I used at my house, it's not for this round uh, stones, but there's this kind of sand and I, I have to investigate if it can be used, but it could be used. It's a kind of sand you put, uh, spread over the stones and what, and you wet it. And then it solidifies. So the kids cannot really grab the stones and start throwing that. That is an option we could investigate if we can use that.
That's the stuff that they use on flagstone walkways, right?
They use that. And I've used it at home some roundy because my dog walks along, along. And, and it has worked so far at least. And also the parents have to be around and control the children because they can do a lot of damage.
Well, it's a problem.
Yeah. And the, the other question I have is it with this solution, um, does it make that area non-permeable? Meaning that if you have water runoff issues today, if you make that area even less, you know, the water can't flow through it by using that solution, what do we do to prevent that? Right?
Well, it will infiltrate some of it, but it is on a slope. So eventually the water will run down and go into field where it's, where it's supposed to go. And that does not happen that, that often. We have a normal rain. It has to be, this year we have had a lot of rain. So it has infiltrated a few times the water was flowing over when the, when if not, then the plants will infiltrate then the water. That's another reason that's good to have the plantings because it will observe immediately the water.
The, the main objective here is.
That they don't throw the stones.
Those rocks.
Yeah.
Have an issue.
Yeah.
And we're going to have new windows on the new town home.
Yeah.
And I know you don't want to replace them.
No, no, I know that. So I can investigate that and we can try it because that is something easy to, to put in there. It's just spreading it out like between the papers. You're, you're familiar with it.
Come back with the cost, um, the yards and bags that you need to complete that to get them secured.
Okay. Can that be independent from finishing the rain garden or?
We'll take it out of your budget somewhere.
Yeah, it can be. I wanted to ask you about this rain garden because I appreciate all the time and effort that you've put into these plantings. Um, just a personal viewpoint. Have we planted, are we planting for today or are we planting for how big they're going to be two years from now? Because in other words, do we need all we're putting in or could we have less because we know they're going to get bigger?
They're not, do you mean the plants going less?
The plants.
Well, if you want that it does the function, you have to plan the amount of plants to do the job. Otherwise, it will not do the job. So you have to do it right. Otherwise, you're wasting money.
Okay. I just wanted that answer.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Um, one more thing I should say, we do not do line item transfers until December. So we'll see where your budget ends up by then as to whether we're going to have to do that, but we don't line item transfer at this time of the year. So when I say that, the parks has to be looking at their total budget and see whether you're going to go over or not. Right now you have spent eighteen seven sixty-eight and you have thirty-eight four fifty in your budget.
Thirty-eight, three thousand.
Thirty thousand, four hundred and fifty.
So it means with.
Three eight.
So we have enough, we have enough money, two thousand dollars, we can use it for that.
But remember, we still don't have the cost of the signs that you, you guys just installed at the preserve. You know, there's a whole lot of other costs that aren't in here yet.
Okay.
Just so you know, that's all we've paid for to date. So is the board okay with them going forward with completing this project?
Please get it done.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that they go forward and complete this project. What was your cost estimate again? Twenty-two hundred or nineteen?
Nineteen hundred, eight hundred.
Not, not to exceed, um, two thousand dollars.
It doesn't exceed it two thousand.
Is it a second?
It's probably less because we have another person.
I have to put a number on it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed and that passes. Um, the next thing we have here is that you want to look for a grant for bike racks and a possible bike repair station. Where is this going?
Well, that was a proposal Janet and the bike coalition said, when the, when you have the new building, there's a lot of people will stop here, would be nice to consider if you would like to have some bike racks so that people can. That's not something urgent. It's just a question that you start thinking about it.
Well, we have thought about it because we did put money in our budget.
Okay.
For this purpose. Let me just get back here. Um, and I have talked to a variety of people. And this is what they suggest for a bike rack because it's most sturdy. It lasts the longest and it allows seven bikes in a much shorter space of, because it's sixty-eight inches long. That's what they suggest to people I know who bike all the time.
Okay.
We planned, we planned, we planned on putting one next to the building over by the bathroom side of it. There is no plans to put a bike repair station. So I don't know how much space that takes. I don't know what kind of cost that is, and I don't know what maintenance is involved. The thing about this loop wave one, the maintenance on these are next to nothing. Once you install them into concrete, there's nothing to take care of. But if you're talking about adding all this other stuff, what is the maintenance on there? What's the cost of it? And we would need to know that sooner than later.
Okay. Well, we can discuss it in our next meeting unless you have discussed this.
St. Croix bike pedestrian.
Move that, move it over to.
They donate these racks, uh, to us if we want it, and they donate the, the repair station. We'll probably come later on with a proposal for you to look at.
How much later though?
And we'll look at what you have up there.
How much later?
What?
How much later?
Well, we've been working at the park right now. We want to finish that job first.
But our unfortunate thing is, is we're building. And if we're going to have to have more concrete poured, we're going to have to know about that.
No, our bike racks still right in the concrete, whether it's up or not up. We put them all over the county.
No, you didn't, you didn't, you didn't understand.
Anything before the park or the concrete support.
She, she's.
No, I'm saying that you have to have.
Larger surface area for the bikes themselves.
We're always going to have the larger area. We want bike racks.
What we're, what we're saying is that as we're, as we're doing the work right now, we have already allocated out a certain amount of concrete. And what we're stating is if you need us to change that, which impacts that project, we would need to know sooner more than later.
What is sooner for you?
Like thirty, like in the next thirty days.
I don't think we need to know about that. Just have an area for bikes out there and we'll fill it.
No, no, we're not, you guys are not putting in your own concrete.
You want to know the area we want?
No, I'm going to back you up. So as you face the building, I don't know what happened to our board, board here for buildings, but it's not here. As you face the building there, there's a sidewalk that goes across the front of it and one down each side. On this side, there's going to be an extra pad for that rack. If you want a bike repair station or something else there, we need to know because the pad needs to be bigger than what we're allocating for this rack.
What pad do you have designed right now?
Just a concrete pad for this to bolt into.
Yeah. I think we can work with that wherever you have.
But we already.
Thinking way bigger on the.
I don't know. Does it have to be two feet bigger, four feet bigger, ten feet bigger? I don't know.
Okay, so the workstation, the, the workstations that I've seen like on the trails, they have one in Stillwater Parkland, Stillwater, they have one in the county parking lot. You know, they're basically something that comes up, you attach a bike to, they've got, they've got cord, uh, cables coming down, tools that are attached to them so that if someone all of a sudden has to change a tire, they go there, they have a tool that they can undo their bike.
Right, so I get that.
So guys.
It's not a massive amount. It's not a.
But we need a, we need a number. So for us, if you, we have allocated out for, is it one of these?
One of those.
Okay, one of these is sixty-eight inches, two and a half feet, I'm assuming, or two and a half inches?
Two and a half feet.
Two and a half feet and thirty-nine inches.
All right.
And that space is allocated for this. What we're saying is within the next thirty days, if you want something else addition to this, then we need to understand the, the volume of area you're asking us to add to it. So if you, you come back and you say, we want the ability to have a bike repair station, then we need to understand the dimensions of concrete that we need to add on if we add on. Does that make more sense?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So.
I, the whole, the whole premise of this was the fact that the whole nation had this stuff available without a cost. And they can get a grant to do this. So that would probably save some money. That was kind of why we brought it forward.
And I appreciate that.
Week, so that next week we can, you know, talk about it, hit dimensions, that kind of thing, and then come back to you and just say, if you want to go this route, then you could build.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
So what we've done in the past is you, an example would be the Somerset Public Library. They built the library, then we came in and did what they wanted us to do for space. But we can figure out what space.
I mean, our whole thing is, is if we're going to pour concrete over there, it's all going to get poured together.
Yeah, because you're going to get a significantly different price.
Different price.
At that volume.
Yeah.
Than what you will if you come back.
So before your next meeting, you want to have something on?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Pictures and whatever you're talking about.
Dimensions at least.
Is this the bike rack they use? Is it something else? What are you talking about?
Okay.
We have to have all the particulars.
All the particulars.
Got it? Got it. Great. Thank you. I'm glad you brought that forward about the grant. Preserve, the signage got placed on the preserve on the border as I understand. So that is done. We do not have the cost yet on it. I didn't get a bill yet from, um, um, the sign company yet on the signage and on the posts that have been ordered, which haven't shown up yet. But we're replacing the fire under posts that are up in the shed with the ones that they use. So that's going to be done.
How many signs did you end up planning with?
Thirty-five. There's forty we ordered. We have thirty-five they installed.
Who was the installer?
Volunteers.
Well, no, Todd Tuma's had his equipment out there to put the post in.
So. Were the adjoining landowners pleased? You don't want them to come back? I want an answer tonight.
Did you talk to any of the adjoining landowners when you're out there working?
No.
Okay.
But Kyle might, Kyle.
Wow.
One landlord, the one who was saying most indicated where he wanted to put them. We put a whole bunch of signs by his. Yeah, I think Kyle's going to meet with them and then the signs on the other side. If we put them along, you know, face, take the corners are the property that he told them.
Okay. Well, we'll see what happens.
And they're very extremely visible.
Good. Glad to hear it. All right, on to the next thing is the Fall Festival. Any. All right, on to the next thing is the Fall Festival. Anything you wanna report on that? Come on up to the mic.
So we're just plugging along with the Fall Festival. I did talk with Zach. Uh, we are gonna work together on the signage. So that we have something uh, the signs through with the fire department and the parks depart. Parks, Trails and Rec Committee so that we're working together and have everything on one sign that we can be putting out. You know, we're pretty much doing what we did last year minus the um, the tractors. We don't have room for tractors with the building and stuff going on. We'll have something um, a booth about uh, history of the township. We have someone committed to do crafts, jewelry and cards. We've talked to the church about baked goods, cookies, preserves. We've talked to the 4H about children's games and animals. Um, I haven't got a hold of Maggie yet, but I wanna get a hold of Maggie to see if she'll, she'll sell the um, honey. Uh, the Boy Scouts last year did the trail activity. We'd like to get them to do that again if we're able to get back there. If that's not in the same, in an area where you don't want people because of the building, that kind of thing. S and J Nursery, uh, we'll be talking to them about the mums too. We think we can get those just because they've had some damage, but they're actually up and running again. And um, that is something that's like a fall thing that they order through and stuff, so that should work. So those are the things that are going on. It won't be quite, you know, like we had it the first time that we restarted it again, but. But we're gonna, you know, work with the fire department. It will be earlier. Um, we're looking at a eight to noon. Uh, people express the fact that they would like to get in there when it's, we had actually a pretty warm day last year. But we'd like to get in there earlier. A lot of people have sports activities in the afternoon. Uh, there's a lot of things going on in the fall. So that's what we plan to do as they come, they go and have breakfast, have their pancake breakfast, that type of thing. You know, they'll come out and the, you know, the different people selling goods from the township will be right there so that they can access that. We don't wanna miss the early ones that came that we did last year.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. We'll have it on the next agenda for an update.
All right, thanks.
Thank you very much. So we're gonna move on to the Plan Commission. We're gonna start out with a Turway Campground and I know you've sent him a cease and desist, but he is up and running. Close session and then on to um, the update on the shed on Sixtieth. I don't have any update on that one. I've not heard any, any more information from the DEA on that, but they have it on their radar. I do know that and they won't tell me till after something takes place. Jay, is there anything you wanted to share on any of our um, junkyards, et cetera? Okay, anything that you had Anton?
Um, nothing that's not on here.
All right. Is that on there?
Other than I get, nothing that isn't already on here. Except I will say that we're hoping next month that we'll be able to get about six or seven new ordinance revisions to you.
Okay. So the ordinance that's on here is twenty twenty-four dash oh eight, chapter one sixty-two. And chapter one sixty-two is um, the solid fuel fire heating devices, which we've had on the books for quite a while. But you've changed it to outdoor.
Yep.
Let me share.
It was already. It was already ready outdoor. We just changed the title.
Yeah, change the title. Yes, I know. So that's good. Let me get it up. Come on, share.
So what's the sum of it? Are they banned or what's?
No, we let them, we let them happen, but you changed some things. Right here, the couple of things you changed.
Yep, we, we used to have, um, I, I can summarize changes real quick. Uh, we used to, to have a requirement that um, that there'd be weatherproofing or other um, weather protection. And we ruled that. There used to be a requirement that said that devices had to be vented to prevent positive pressure condition on fluids. Which apparently came out of the section on flu, on fuel. Non-solid fuel um, devices when this ordinance was originally written. Um, there used to be a requirement that the devices had to be enclosed by fencing or other barriers. And that was removed. None of these were uh, requirements that the state has.
Okay.
And I believe that that's it.
Anybody have any questions for him? I don't believe, Nick, you've had a chance to review this, have you? Oh, you did?
Yes, I did review it and it's fine. It's acceptable.
Anyone have any, I mean, it's, it's our old ordinance. Why does it keep doing that?
I don't know. Somehow there's a configuration where it's set to unmute or set to mute after like thirty minutes. It's about almost on the button from when we started.
Um, this is one that we've had on the books. We did, is this the one we had the severability to because it wasn't in there?
Uh, no, this one did have severability.
Did have it, okay. So that's the whole thing. So if anyone doesn't have any questions, I'll make the motion. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash oh eight regarding chapter one sixty-two. Of the solid fuel fired heating devices with the changes recommended by the um, Plan Commission.
Second.
Do any other discussion regarding this? Would you like to do roll call vote?
Teresa Johnson?
Yes.
Chris Marshall?
Yes.
Justin Cruz?
Hi.
Hey Gavin?
Hi.
Matt Moore is not here, so the motion carried and then you'll get that off to the code. On to the conditional use permit. So the county has a conditional use permit. Um, that they would like us to weigh in on and that is um, just a second, I'm looking for it here.
It's the conditional use permit application filing and grading for St. Craig County, uh, St. Craig Yacht Club.
Right.
Island Beach, PID oh three oh two oh two three two oh zero zero zero.
Do you have it?
Yes, I, I read it through at the Plan Commission.
Is it? I know, but it's not in here.
Oh, is it not in the drive?
Yeah, it's not in the drive. Anyway, this is one that county does and they have their meeting coming up. Um, they pay, it, this is um, the yacht club owns the land on the river down below. And they're just asking for um. It's in the shoreline. Just let me see. It's that, that thing that butts out into the river where the yacht club is south of this old Stillwater Bridge, but north of the new one.
It's where you or I would not be allowed to vote.
You don't get to, you don't get to pull your boat up there.
Yeah.
Right, and so is it affiliated with uh, where? Okay, yeah, thank you. Is it?
Yeah, but it's not affiliated with them. It's a separate entity.
Separate entity, must the homeowners use it?
Only if they belong to the St. Craig Yacht Club.
Yeah, so those are those fifteen, twenty-five thousand dollars slips.
So when you have a big boat on the river and you decide you wanna pull in there. If you can't prove that you're an, a member of the yacht club, you're asked to leave. Yes, so original sand has accumulated seventy-five to a hundred feet beyond the beach. During with safe navigation to the property and they're asking to remove that ridge and deposit the dredged sand on the beach. So the amount of ma- material that they're going to be moving is thirty-three hundred cubic yards. For St. Craig Yacht Club? Um, six four three five St. Craig Trail North Stillwater. So pretty easy. So we just need, they recommended, the Plan Commission recommended approval on this to the county. So I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the conditional use permit for the St. Craig Yacht Club to St. Craig County.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed and that passes. And then um. We did that operator licenses. You saw those on the clipboard. Anyone have any questions about those or wanna make the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the operator license for Caitlin Ness for B and L Liquor. And I'll make a mo- uh, and to approve the operator license for Siler Johnson of Consumer Co-op.
Is there a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed and it passes. So if you remember, we stated that we would start. Um, using ARPA funds for Berghammer builders only. So this is the approval of that transfer of those ARPA funds to our checking account to pay for it in this specific number. Does anyone wanna make that motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of ARPA funds to cover the pay request number one. For Bergstrom in the amount of thirty-two thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-five cents.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. And just so you know that if you looked at your bank balances from Terry, that, that transfer is not in there yet. Cause she can't legally do it until after this meeting, so she'll get it done tomorrow.
Is that considered a line item transfer?
No. No. No, this is, we've put in there that we were using that money this year, but the federal re- I know. But the federal requirements say that we have to state every time we use the money, what we're using it for. So on to public records requests. Do you have anything you'd like to add on that besides the huge one you just got this week?
What was the nature of the quote huge one we received this week?
Uh, well, I'm sure Nick can talk to that.
You might on, on.
Uh, it's not just us. There were a series of um. Uh, voter registration challenges uh, that were sent out from a core group of people. Uh, three or four people um, that the challenges didn't comply with state law. Uh, but challenged voter registration files uh, across Western Wisconsin. And so all of the clerks have been left to deal with uh, these challenges. Uh, the county's been good at providing direction. I've tried to provide some blanket direction to the communities that I represent. But none of these requests comply with state law because they're not submitted with an affidavit. Uh, you can only challenge electors in your municipality. Uh, you have to provide, you know, a number of pieces of information so that we can valid, uh, validate and verify. Who you are and where you live and which community you're a, a registered elector. Um, so it caused great consternation amongst the clerks throughout the region this week.
So I, I, just because I'm being curious. With the direction from both the county and you, is there a way that we can mitigate any additional strain? On the office and or costs associated to the town?
Well.
For these. Uh, erroneous requests?
Yes, so I uh, have been responding on behalf of some of the communities that I represent. That have asked me to respond to these folks and my response when they ask for. Ask what the community is doing, my response is. The statutes that you have cited in your request provide the requirements that you need to follow. To challenge the voter registrations in this community. You have not complied with those requirements and so we are denying your request.
Has our community requested a similar templated response?
Uh, not yet, but Terry and, Terry and I will have that conversation. I, I don't, she may have responded. She may have already sent that response. Uh, but we'll, we'll provide that support, so.
Okay.
Sent a response.
So.
Just that she received.
That the attorney's reviewing it.
Some, some clerks have been very kind and state law is very clear that you can't challenge inactive voters. You can only cha- challenge active voters. Uh, so some clerks have been kind and saying, you know, please filter out the inactives. Regardless, the request as it relates to actives. Isn't statutorily compliant and beyond that. Clerks don't have a requirement or an obligation to respond. We allow, the state allows people to provide input on voter lists. But clerks have the broad discretion to do what they will with challenges.
Why do I feel like this is affiliated to a same group that likes to blame us for wasting money as a government entity? Is the same one that sends us on wild goose chases that cause us to waste money? So Terry, are you, are you gonna reach out and just get that blanketed template or just have our attorney respond to?
We'll have a conversation.
Thank you.
Any other public workers requests that we need to know?
No. Any others that we need to know about?
No.
Okay. Approval of appointments to town committees. We finally got this all finalized. So we are adding Joanne Cusick to the Plan Commission. Um, Les Weber to Public Works and Carol Skinner to the Board of Appeals and they are all alternates. So anyone wanna make a motion to approve those um, appointments?
I'll make a motion to approve Joanne Cusick to the Plan Commission as alternate two. Uh, Les Weber to alternate two of Public Works and Carol Skinner as alternate one to the Board of Appeals.
Is there a second? And the reason she's alternate one is that Carolyn Barrett wants to remain as two.
Okay.
So that's why. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that passes. You all got a hard copy of this, so you have it handy in case you wonder who's doing what. You've got it in your hands. Um, approval of town board minutes.
I make a motion to approve the town board minutes for June thirteenth.
Is there a second? Were you here?
Thought I was. I wasn't here for me.
You were here. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passes. I'll make a motion to approve all of our checks and EPAs from. Six fourteen of twenty twenty-four, starting with check number twenty-five one one eight. Through twenty-five one seventy-six. Is there?
Second.
Second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that passes. That brings us to where we're gonna go into closed session, everybody. I'm gonna pass these out.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session under Wisconsin statute nineteen dot eight five parent G conference with legal counsel.
Hi.
Justin Cruz?
Yes.
Chris Marshall?
Yeah.
Teresa Johnson?
Yes.
Matt Moore, not present.
Okay, let me stop this recording just a second.
Everybody mute this.
Just let me stop the recording. Oh my goodness.